Okay, I have been told that we are going to do number six and seven together. Number six is VTT 73704 SL 1A. Number seven is DIR 2015 2697 SPP 1A. Do we have a report for staff?
Yes. Yeah, good afternoon, I'm Mark Worshing with the Valley Neighborhood Project Section of the planning department. As you indicate, there are two appeals before you. The first is an appeal of the approval of the track map for 26 small lot subdivision in Valley Village. Then the second is an appeal of an accompanying project permit compliance approval for the 26 lots pursuant to the Valley Village specific plan. The appellate's appeal points are that the track map is not consistent with the community plan. The project site is not suitable for the proposed density of development. The design of the subdivision or the type of improvements are likely to cause serious public health problems. There is substantial evidence that an environmental impact report rather than a mitigating negative declaration should have been prepared. The City Planning Commission erred and abused its discretion in approving the track map. And the 26 lots are inconsistent with the provisions for the Valley Village specific plan. We think the extensive findings in the track map approval letter, in the approval letter for the project permit compliance, and the responses in the staff reports for the two appeals demonstrate that the track map is consistent with the community plan. The project site is suitable for the proposed density, which is less than that permitted by the zoning and the community plan. There are no serious health impacts associated with this project. The mitigated negative declaration for this project is adequate and the EIR is not required. The City Planning Commission had no involvement in approving the track map. And the 26 lots are consistent with the Valley Village specific plan. Furthermore, the appellants have not provided any facts or arguments in support of their appeal points as part of the filings for their appeals. Therefore, we are recommending that the two appeals be denied. Nelson Rodriguez will now respond to the appeal points for the track map appeal. And Dan O'Donnell will respond to the appeal points of the specific plan project permit compliance approval, both in greater detail.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, Nelson Rodriguez, Department of City Planning. I'll just go over the five key points for the appeal for the vested tenant map. The first appeal point had to do with the map not being consistent with the community plan. Our staff response is that the project site is designated medium residential in the North Hollywood Valley Village community plan with a corresponding zone of the R3. The property consists of 26 units, which is substantially less than the maximum 52 units allowed by the R3 zone and the 35 units allowed by the Q R3-1 zone, which makes it consistent with that zone and the medium residential designation on the community plan. The appellate's point two has to do with the project site is not physically suitable for the proposed density of development given the significant adverse impacts to circulation and parking. In respect to the density, permitted avenue from Weddington Street to Chandler Boulevard is almost entirely developed with multifamily residential buildings, mostly at the density permitted by the R3 zone. The project density, as I mentioned, is 26 units. It's significantly lower than the maximum density allowed in the North Hollywood Valley Village community plan and the zone. In respect to the parking and circulation, this project did not require an analysis from our Department of Transportation, but it was prepared at the request of the applicant. And the Department of Transportation reviewed the traffic study prepared for this project and demonstrated that the proposed use of the project site will not significantly impact vehicular, bicycle, or pedestrian traffic in the surrounding area. The study was included in the MND which you have before you. The appellate's point three is that the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems. In particular, traffic and air quality issues prevent the necessary findings for approval of a vested tentative map. Our response is that the mitigation negative declaration is comprehensive and details traffic and air quality issues and concerns and concludes that both air quality and transportation impacts can be mitigated to a less than significant impact. The appellate's fourth point is that the substantial evidence submitted into the administrative record demonstrating a fair argument requiring an environmental impact report has been disregarded. Staff response is that the staff analysis of the MND properly concludes that no environmental impact would result from the development of this project. In addition, the appellants have not demonstrated that any identified impacts would remain after implementing mitigation measures necessitating the need for an environmental impact report. And the final point by the appellant is that the City Planning Commission erred and abused its discretion in making contrary determinations and findings that are not supported by substantial evidence in the record. Our response to that is that the appellant is misinformed in asserting that the City Planning Commission abused its discretion for this project because the decision to approve the map was made by the deputy advisory agency and not the City Planning Commission. The City Planning Commission has not heard this case and cannot hear the case because the number of units involved is below the 50 unit threshold needed in order for the City Planning Commission to have jurisdiction, which is why this case is before you today. With that said, staff recommendation for this project is to sustain approval of the vested tentative track map 73704 SL for small lot and also recommend that five corrections, as noted on page two of the appeal map report be approved, including the environmental MND, ENV-2015-2618, and the accompanying mitigation monitoring program be adopted.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Commission, Dan O'Donnell, Project Planning Division. Nelson went through things pretty comprehensively, but my contribution here is to state that the appellants rely heavily on policies, goals, and objectives of either the general plan, the community plan, or the specific plan. Especially in the case of the specific plan, they're relying on the purpose statements. Now, purpose statements are not mandatory, they are not regulatory. They are statements of intent and stating the reasons why the regulations in that plan are there. They are justifications, they are not mandatory requirements. There are eight policy statements in the Valley Village specific plan. Five of those relate to protection of existing single-family neighborhoods. The purpose of that plan, as stated in the whereas clauses up front and in five of the eight purposes, was to protect the existing single-family neighborhoods from commercial and multifamily developments. But just in stating that fact, the plan obviously anticipated that there would be development. The plan was not intended to be a moratorium on any development occurring in Valley Village, nor was it to preserve all existing neighborhoods exactly as they have been or netted. A couple of other points. The project has demolished nine existing units on the site and replacing it with 26 single-family homes. The neighborhood is a mixture of multifamily apartments and condominiums. So the introduction of a for-sale project in this neighborhood is not new, they exist. There is a 30-unit apartment building, an 18-unit apartment building. The entire street on both sides is completely multifamily, both for sale and for rent. The appellant in this case attempted to get two of the buildings on these sites declared as historic cultural monuments in 2015. The Cultural Heritage Commission declined to nominate those as historic cultural structures. They also attempted to get nominated two large camphor trees that are on-site as historic cultural monuments. The commission declined also to nominate those. There is a total of 24 trees on the site, none of which are protected trees. And as a result of all of these comments raised about the trees, the applicant actually reduced the project by two units. It was originally 28, it was reduced to 26 and preserved the two camphor trees on-site. And you can see that on the landscape plan as a part of your package. Other than that, I think we probably just wait to respond to any questions or comments you have. We recommend that we deny the appeal and sustain the director's determination and approve the environmental mitigated negative declaration.
So I have a question. If they weren't allowed to do the small lot subdivision, what would be the density that they could go to under this zone?
They could build one per 1,200 square feet of lot area under the Q R3 zone that it currently has.
So what's the maximum number of units it could go in?
35.
35.
35, and they are building 26.
So they could go to a building in safety, pull a permit, and build a apartment?
Yes. Now, it also does involve the vacation and merger of a stub portion of Weddington. But even without that vacation, they could still build 35 units. Very well, thank you. We will hear from the appellate, Rick Abrams.
Hi, I'm Rick Abrams. We have submitted a lot of writings, I'm not going to repeat them, except for the most recent thing that we did a revision that we submitted, I believe July 5th. That came out of discussions we had with Judge Fruen. And he was advising that when you request EIR that exceeds somewhat the scope of the exact project because you say that nature of the area is being changed, that it's going to be beneficial to the courts and everyone if you delineated just what area the EIR is going to go to. Because we're saying that the nature of Valley Village is being changed by these successive projects that keep tearing down the single-family homes and then putting in these other projects. So the thing that we said on July 5th, and I have copies here for you, which I'll give at the end just in case you need them, it runs between Chandler and Magnolia, which is basically one long block. But it's cut, not quite in the middle, by Weddington, which runs, I think, Bellingham, I think is the name of the street, over to Hermitage, and then one half-block more where it dead-ends. And that's a discrete area that we're requesting that a limited EIR be done in order to evaluate the environmental impacts on that part. If you wipe out this core area of this limited area, and that's what this project would do. And you have to be able to see and visualize what it's doing. It's taking what is a unique situation, primarily where that one-half-block of Weddington extends west from Hermitage. It has some unique, although not historic, but some unique structures on both sides that make it a very community-oriented place. These projects will destroy that character. And yes, we are talking about the purposes of Valley Village specific plan. But when, under the law, when your enactment, successive enactments violate the purpose of the Valley plan, well, then you have to step back and say, what we have here is a form of piecemealization. Now, there's a couple forms of piecemealization. Sometimes it's like UC Regions does one for a huge campus, and then they come in with a bunch of other projects and try and say, well, we did one massive EIR, but all their subparts are much greater, but we're not dealing with that. We're dealing with the situation here where one council district says, I'm going to tear down these single-family homes, I'm going to tear down these family homes, I'm going to tear down these unique things. And as the cumulative effect is that the character that the specific plan was designed to protect is often totally destroyed. Now, there's already been a destruction partially because two homes were torn down three days before the Cultural Heritage Commission could meet. And so there's already been a serious wound right at this intersection. But there is still something sufficient that if you do an EIR, that can probably be worked out. Some sort of accommodation where the developer can maybe do something, but it doesn't just destroy the unique character we have here. There's one thing I want to point out is that unfortunately, too much, the city has become governed by litigation. And help has been involved in a lot of that, and we don't really like it. And we don't think it's good policy that there be so much litigation. But very often, we feel pushed into it, and we feel we're kind of being pushed into it this way also. This would be a very good time for the area planning commission to say, wait a minute, they only want a limited EIR to look at these specific issues. Is the nature of Valley Village in this circumscribed area going to be destroyed if we do this project as it is? Let's see what the alternatives are. Because what will happen, and it's happened to a lot of other developers, is it gets passed unanimously by the city council. You could do a 50-story building, and the city council would pass it unanimously because we know they pass everything unanimously, but then they get into the court. And then the court say, well, wait a minute, I'm going to take a look at this. And then what happens is that it gets sent back after 18 months, maybe two years, and then everything is delayed, the developers harmed, the community is harmed. And so this would be a very good time to say, wait a minute, let's do this limited EIR study right now so we don't make a mistake. Thank you very much. And just in case you want to hang a handout, I thought I had enough.
You had it right here, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I thought I had enough for the staff too, but you already had the official one.
Thank you. We're going to hear from the applicant and representative.
We had kind of, I'm one of the appellants. I didn't mean to take.
What, 10 of them?
Yeah, and we got two projects, six and seven. So I was thinking that she would then speak on the next one, because I didn't need to take all her time since we had two.
Please come up. What's your name?
Jennifer Getz.
Hold on, hold on. Jennifer what?
Getz.
While I find your speaker card, please go and give us your name and address and go ahead.
Jennifer Getz, 5303 and 1/2, Hermitage Avenue, Valley Village, 91607.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon Commissioners. Hopefully, you've received all the documentation that's been submitted. We've had some notice issues and some documentation submission issues. Just to address a couple things, I was designated on behalf of Jed Fusch, who's also one of the appellants, who had an emergency out-of-town issue, couldn't be here. So he asked me to speak on his behalf. A few issues to address what Dan O'Donnell stated. I don't believe there's anything in the conservation element or the open space plan or the general plan that says that trees must be protected for them to be preserved. If that's the case, I must have missed that part. The same thing goes with protected species. I believe that the word is called preservation, and then we're supposed to preserve what we have left before they get onto the endangered species list and before the need to put them on the protected species list, or species of trees as well. And I believe that's pretty clear in the conservation element. Also, on the small lot subdivisions, if I can refer to the evidence that has been submitted, if I can just rattle off the exhibits, I think you all have packets which are clearly somewhere else. The small lot subdivision ordinance, Council file 13478 and 13324, 131478-S3, were all motions filed by several council members, including District 2's council member, who all declared small lot subdivisions to be completely inappropriate, out of scale, unaffordable, and neighborhood destruction, causing neighborhood destruction, which is also why the small lot ordinance, which is Exhibit F4F, is still under review because of all the neighborhood destruction it's caused. On a different note, more than 114 separate documents have been submitted to the department more than once. Everybody was tossed around and pointed to somewhere else to submit documentation. I apologize if there's duplicates in the record, but I'd rather them be there than not have you have anything at all. This documentation has contained personal observations, which are substantial evidence according to SEQA, statistics, data reports, photographs, letters, statements, all reflecting substantial evidence. The technical and non-technical documentation submitted has demonstrated the contradicting nature of the proposed and the inconsistencies with the general and specific community plans. All, and 114 is a very lenient number. All 114 documents have gone ignored by the department, and they have simply just chosen to pick and choose what, well, they really addressed none of it. So we don't obviously have time to go over 114 documents, but we tried to make it as easy to navigate through colors in the packet that's there under desk at the bottom.
That's right.
Yeah, that's the one. And there's even like an index color-coordinated, it's supposed to be very easy to get through. We also just want to ask the Commissioners, just in doing some research, you know, Charter Code 552 describes the area planning commission as a quasi-judicial agency. And this is defined as a commission that's obliged to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from those facts as the basis of an official action. And thankfully, we don't have to rely on, you know, staff reports from the same department that has not held an appeal since 2006. Every appeal has been denied since 2006. And every report has been written, not recommended to the Commissioners to deny the appeal since 2006. We have that documentation as well that we're happy to submit to you. So that being said, the commission not being obliged to make their determination off of a report coming from the same department that believes that none of the projects over the last decade have no impact. As I represent several hundred members of my community that are impacted directly by this, as well as the kids who ride skateboards and learn how to ride bikes on our street because it's the safest choice in our neighborhood because we are a cul-de-sac. So it's especially from parents, probably two dozen letters from parents that stated why they moved into the neighborhood was because of that street, because it's a quiet, safe street for their kids. And lock parties are held. We have several film and location letters showing how many movies are shot there and videos, music videos. We have letters from Franz Ferdinand, all different kinds of bands that have submitted their testimony to this property being one of a kind and to not be subject to the kind of damage that, if I can just finish my paragraph.
You can.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Getting back on track, yes, the history and pattern of the department to conclude no impact in nearly every residential project over the last decade, that somehow the invasion of the small lot subdivision that causes tree removal, public street removal, affordable housing removal, parking removal, removal of open space, removal of natural resources, an increase in traffic, more than quadrupling water usage, quadrupling gas and energy usage, and greenhouse gas emissions, have all somehow defied the laws of physics in the office of the planners. And that's why we are grateful to have this opportunity in front of the objective Commissioners today so that you can use this evidence that you've been supplied and refer to the open space element, for example, which does not condone unnecessary destruction on what has been proven to be considered valuable space. We have shown you pictures of cars parked illegally sometimes. We're admitting to our neighbors parking illegally because of the lack of parking in our neighborhood. The conservation element does not condone neighborhood extermination, nor does it condone extermination of cultural and historic aspects on which the neighborhood is based, otherwise known as the foundation of a neighborhood, which is also described in our specific plan. And, you know, going back further, the specific plan, not the original council file that was issued later, but the original council file, File 86-0418, talked about specifically the moratorium that city council extended for up to seven years to the Valley Village until the specific plan was finished because they were so protective and they were getting encroached upon and increased density, that the file states the policy, goal, and intent of the plan. It was initiated by residents for this purpose, and that's its job. Another element here that got missed was case law.
You're over your time limit, but please go ahead.
Are you sure?
Wrap it up as you can.
Another element that has gone missed was the case law, County of San Diego versus California Water Company, that says a judge confirming that a street may not be abandoned without a finding that the road is unnecessary for present or prospective public use, which again, we have submitted substantial evidence proving use, it's going to be used tomorrow, it's used right now, it was used yesterday, and I bet my hands it's going to be used in a week. The Bureau of Engineering manual also states that if a merger is an issue of controversy, the Bureau should be recommending the advisory agency not to approve the merger. And that's Section DD4, and one more section, Commissioner Cochran, thank you very much. That the street exists in general for primary purposes of travel and their use for conveyance persons there on the paramount use. Any other uses are secondary. So the primary use of a public street is for us, for the public, and everything after that is secondary. Aside from that, I just request the Commissioners, hopefully you've had some time to go over the document. We're happy to submit more. We get letters every single day from people, and there's a substantial amount of community members as well that are taking up their time, so sorry to go over.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Michael Feinstein, please.
Hi, my name is Mike Feinstein.
Do you mind giving us your address, Mr. Feinstein?
I'm going to give that to you. I'm a resident and homeowner in Sherman Oaks at 5517 Burnett Avenue, 91411. I am a police community representative and member of the San Fernando Valley Coalition and next-door lead and communicate with 4,600 residents in the San Fernando Valley. I have never in all these years seen so many approvals of any and all projects by this commission. The proposed site was formerly Marilyn Monroe's home that was illegally torn down two days before the review. Unacceptable. Somewhere along the line, somebody dropped the ball here, and that happened. So that was unacceptable. Okay, so now that developer is gone, and now another developer's coming in who wants to build these unaffordable condos, shut down part of Weddington Street at Hermitage, taking away much-needed parking and displacing some residents. The Studio City residents are being let down by this commission. A more appropriate plan needs to be examined before another inappropriate project is approved. This company, I looked them up at the Contractor State License Board, has operated under well over 100, doing business ads, names. Most of his licenses are expired or have just, are inactive. So it is nearly impossible to see, to review complaints or judgments against DHS. This needs to be reviewed more carefully before anything proceeds. In the meantime, this hearing will be under public scrutiny, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Seidman.
Yes. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly.
Oh, just a good guess.
Hi, I'm Lisa Seidman. I reside at 4540 Nagel Avenue in Sherman Oaks, 91423. I'm here to support the appeal, but I would like to talk specifically about the parking and traffic that will occur if this development is built. There are going to be 26 30-foot-tall There are going to be 26, uh, 30-foot-tall, single-family residences. They're allowed two onsite parking spaces and then for each home, and then seven guest onsite parking spaces. And that is with the assumption that everybody who moves into these homes only have two cars. Now, I looked at the plans for these homes and they consist of two to three bedrooms in each home. Some even have what's designated as an office, but can be turned into a bedroom. There are simply not enough parking spaces for the residences. So, uh, they will, those who have extra cars will park on the street. Those who have parties, um, seven guest spaces are not enough, they will park on the street. Evidence has been, has been submitted that shows that Weddington and Hermitage is already filled with cars parking on the street. So the addition of these 26 homes is going to create more traffic and more onsite parking issues, plus you're taking away cul-de-sac. So you're also taking away offsite parking spaces. That's why I request that you deny the project, that you approve the appeal. But I also ask, because you have so much, um, to look at, that maybe you don't make a decision so quickly today, I'm also submitting, um, in my neighborhood in Sherman Oaks, this is what Hermitage and Wedding will look like if you allow this 26-home property to be built. Uh, we have it in my neighborhood in Sherman Oaks and it is a traffic and parking nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sean Mahank?
Havik.
I'm sorry about that.
Almost, almost. How are you, counsel? Um, my name is Shama Havik, I live at 5303 Hermitage Way, it's Valley Village, 91607.
Yes, sir, thank you, go ahead.
Um, I don't know, I'm here, I'm here to, uh, request you guys disapprove this, uh, this support of the appeal here, um, I just, I don't know, parking's really hard. Uh, it's nearly difficult to find over there. Um, I find myself parking a couple blocks away sometimes, you know, and it's, uh, it's kind of very inconvenient. Um, as well as it would be putting me out of a place if this is approved, you know what I mean? I, I live there, um, so, it's, uh, I don't know, I think it could be affected the most by anybody getting it approved. Um, so yeah, I mean, parking is just horrible. Um, very clear, people are, yeah, like, people do park illegally over there quite a bit and it gets very tough to even walk around sometimes because it's, you know, sideways parking, like. But, um, yeah, I know, I just, I just, uh, hope you guys can see what the right decision is and, um, disapprove it, alright?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, Donna Gouli?
Good evening.
Hello.
I am asking you tonight to.
Would you mind giving us your name and address, please?
Donna Gouli, 12234 Chandler Boulevard, number seven.
Thank you.
I am asking you to accept the appeal. The proposed development is wrong for the neighborhood in many respects. One of the worst issues is the destruction of Weddington. This street was built and maintained with our tax dollars. It is vital to the area and heavily, huh, sorry, and heavily used by pedestrians, including myself, dog walkers, bikers. And again, I implore you to reject this proposed development. Please remember, there is another proposed development, three buildings up the block, in addition to the demolished dowry house that was mentioned earlier. Mark Worshing is on the Valley Village Neighborhood Council. We actually share a committee. He should not be here doing this, it's a major conflict of interest. I would also like to remind you that the City Cultural Heritage Commission made saving the count of trees a condition of not making them a historical monument.
Thank you. Sam Zines? Two for two wrong or two for two right?
Two for two right, I think. Sam Zines, uh, I reside at 14250 McCormick Street in Sherman Oaks, uh, that is 91401. Um, I am against the project and forward the appeal. Um, nobody's really talking about this, but it seems like every single one of these big developments just goes right to the big developer and not to, nobody really thinks about the residents in the neighborhood. Um, we have a huge homelessness crisis going on in California, and why is that? It's because people are being evicted from rent-controlled apartments that they can afford and big businesses building large $800,000 homes that nobody can afford. Um, if I'm not mistaken, these are rent-controlled units that are being demolished. Um, we don't need more $800,000 homes. We need more rent-controlled apartments that people can actually afford in the neighborhood. Basically all I have to say, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Peter Cole?
I'll pass. I'll pass.
Yes, sir. David Hernandez?
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, David Hernandez, 5312 Bellingham, apartment three, Valley Village. And, um, I have lived there for about 29 years in that same apartment, which is one block east of Hermitage and the southern border of our building is at Weddington. And when we moved into that community, it was, uh, uh, pretty incredible. Across the street were a lot of single-family homes where we had our neighbor-to-watch meetings, our community meetings. Uh, now, especially on Tuesdays when it's trash day, I come home after seven o'clock at night. If I'm lucky, I may find a parking spot one block away or I'll have to park on Magnolia, which is at the southern border, if I'm lucky. But since it is limited parking there, I have to get up at six o'clock in the morning and go move my car. Or if I'm lucky, I can find a parking space on Chandler, one or two blocks east of Bellingham. There are a lot of individuals who are in that situation. There are now a lot of homeless and transients living in that area. We had a murder and an assault two blocks away because, from a transient. And so the area itself, because of the lack of parking, is no longer safe at night for anyone. That is not, that, that was not caused by the applicants. I understand that. But in going into a community and making a decision to build, you have to take the situation as it is. And if you choose an area that is already under crisis for different reasons, then it is better to work with the community. And if this can't be resolved with a limited environmental impact report, this would do much better for the applicant as well as the residents. And I'll close with this. My experience with the commission has been a positive one. Staff has been very meticulous, they have been very adherent to, to detail. So when I come here today and I see that the decision letter was presented with five errors, then I ask myself, was it lack of resources? Was this project being rushed? And if there were five areas in the decision letter, what other areas that need to be revisited and to determine if they are valid? And so, like I've said, staff has always been very, very adherent to details. So this decision letter with five errors is really alarming. And I believe warrants, uh, granting of the appeal to at least make sure that all aspects of this project are free of such errors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Aileen Graves?
Hello, my name is Aileen Graves. My address is 5516 Cantaloupe Avenue in Sherman Oaks. Um, I'd like to confer with concerns of previous speakers. And in addressing the lack of parking in the area and poor traffic flow and congestion, many years ago, I lived on Corteen Place between Magnolia and Chandler Boulevard, which is located one block west of Hermitage Avenue. I lived in that neighborhood for nine years and during that time, parking was very challenging, so much so that many neighbors on my block parked their cars on Hermitage so that the visitors could stay in their assigned parking. And that did involve having to walk several blocks away from our homes. I lived there from the late eighties to the early nineties, well, mid-nineties. So, we've had 25 years of increased building and development in that area um, to contribute to even more parking problems. Um, my other concern is the poor traffic flow and congestion. It is an unusual area. It's a two-block street that is bordered, basically, it deadends into Chandler on the north and Magnolia on the south. And in order to go westbound from Hermitage, there's only one exit route. You have to go south to Magnolia and take a right-hand turn. And that's because there's no alternative route to go west without going many blocks out of your way, because the northern end of Hermitage deadends into an eastbound, one-way Chandler Avenue. In the morning during rush hour, it's not uncommon to see this intersection backed up several cars deep. The second problem at that same intersection occurs when someone goes southbound on Hermitage to Magnolia and then attempts to make a left or eastbound turn. This is only very dangerous, but it also continue, it contributes to an even, um, longer backup of cars waiting to turn at that intersection. In closing, I would just like to say that I feel that adding 26 more living units to an area already overcrowded will only exacerbate the parking and the traffic congestion problems that concur, uh, excuse me, that currently exist in this area.
Thank you. Karen Casey? Uh, Janet Shaw?
Very nice. Yes, no one ever gets that one. Hello, um, 4724 Kester, Sherman Oaks, 91403.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where do you start? Um, I'm a native Angeleno, um, I just have my, you know, I'll say it right, uh, sorry. As a native Angeleno and current Valley resident who also ran a large talent agency out of Valley Village for seven years, um, I strongly oppose this project and support this appeal. We have more than enough massive developments that have recently been built or being built currently, especially in and around Valley Village. There seems to be a dangerous and unfortunate epidemic demolishing established, healthy, and sustainable communities and neighborhoods with affordable housing to overbuild for max profit, resulting in overdedification that erode the character of our neighborhoods and ultimately the quality of our lives. Um, I'm also, um, on the board of Bring Hollywood Home, a nonprofit organization, um, helping to stop runaway production in LA. Um, and I see a lot, just as a personal note, I see a lot of actors and obviously production people coming out here and this is a big industry. And affordable housing is a real big crisis. And something like this is the crux of the problem. We're taking away established rent-controlled areas like this and, you know, these developments are probably suited to somebody like me and my husband. We would probably come and look for these types of houses. Um, but it just is not appealing, it just seems very out of character. The whole area is like apartment buildings and I don't understand how this 26, they're getting rid of a cul-de-sac, which is very utilized and building these 26 unaffordable houses that pretty much inflate the area, um, of the housing prices. I'm just gonna read this letter, I didn't write this, but somebody else did, by William Huxworth Wheelock.
I believe we have that letter.
I'm sorry?
Do we have that letter?
Yes, yes. The company Urban Blocks is not in the business of building houses as they claim. Their business model is to buy property, evict middle and working-class families from affordable, existing rental homes, and then resell the land with entitlements to other developers. Their job is to bully tenants into living so they can sell unoccupied lots at an extremely high profit margin. They pay one of the top five lobbying companies to smooth their way at City Hall who give big donations to city council members. The lots in the possession remain abandoned and cared for as they try to sell it for outrageous prices. Um, the community, uh, Urban Blocks engages in dubious business practices. On a recent project, Urban Blocks submitted a proposal in which they took a solo report from another project and simply changed the front page heading expecting no one at the DCP's expediting office to read this important state mandated critical report, and no one at the office did. The community members did. They found that the solo report was falsified and actually pertained to a property two miles away on a completely different site. When this was brought to the attention of the DCP, they ignored it and never addressed it. The solo report was prepared by the firm DHS and Associates, operated by Stephen Zemmy. They also lied on notarized documents pertaining to the amount of rent that current tenants were paying. Urban Blocks claimed current tenants were paying in the area $1,200 a month. The next question asked whether the current tenants could find like rent in the neighborhood, and to this answered, yes. If the current tenants were paying $1,200 rent, this would, they, this would have been an honest answer, but they were not. They were paying half that. This is important because these two questions pertain to the demolition permit. The city is supposed to take into consideration whether existing structures can be demolished based on whether existing tenants can find like rent in the neighborhood. The tenants clearly could not find $600 rent, so Urban Blocks lied and claimed that they had paid $1,200. Moreover, the family in question was struggling to care for severely disabled child. Urban Blocks lied in order to kick out a family with severely disabled child while the DCP didn't even bother to check the paperwork. This is deeply disturbing and is why it is vital that you carefully consider whether you want this type of firm doing business in your neighborhood. Impressed by the committee on this issue, Urban Blocks claimed that one of the contractors, Stephen Zemmy for DHS and Associates, had made an unimportant clerical mistake. It was incompletely ignored by the DCP. What community members knew was that Stephen Zemmy had nothing to do with the notarized document because he did not sign it. It was signed by Rafi Shiranian, a principal at Urban Blocks. It should also be mentioned that Stephen Zemmy has been in business for 20 years and these are all standard forms that a person in this line of works would be extremely familiar with. Urban Blocks persuaded Stephen Zemmy to lie about filling out a notarized document he did not sign. Again, the DCP ignored the fact that the signature was not on the document and treated this information as irrelevant. Um, this history may be unimportant, this history may be important to you because it shows two things, the questionable business ethics of Urban Blocks and DCP's questionable capacity to correctly judge a project or even look at it especially if the developer has paid extra to have the project extradited. This is why it is so important that we have an independent review process to uphold community members' appeals. The community depends on the appeals process to look into whether the DCP correctly judged the merits and legality of a project for a given neighborhood. Unfortunately, there is a glaring defect in this process. If a community group appeals a determination of the DCP, there is an appeals hearing. At the hearing, there is a panel of commissioners charged with judging whether to uphold or deny the appeal. The appellant appears with various members of the community. The DCP has defended is represented by the city attorney. The city attorney also asks to advise the commission on legal questions. Therein lies a problem. The commission must ask legal, legal advice from the lawyer of the defendant. Is it any wonder so few appeals are ever upheld? This puts the commission in a very unfortunate position and is also why the commission must resist the temptation to ask the city attorney if they can legally uphold an appeal. It could be done, if you couldn't, there would be no appeals process. The lawyer for the DCP is going to deliver information that is best for his or her client to DCP. Hopefully this process will be changed, but in the meantime, we respectfully ask the commission to make up its own mind as to whether this is a good project for the neighborhoods you are working so hard for. It takes courage for a commission to stand up to the city attorney and the DCP and uphold an appeal. I urge you to do exactly this to keep Urban Blocks out of the neighborhoods you represent. This property in question does not even belong to the developers and this process should never even started. Urban Blocks has a reputation for bullying and treating tenants and abandoning property while they try to resell entitlements for huge profits. They are not in the business of building more much-needed housing. They are in the business of driving up the price of real estate for average families to not afford homes. They are in the business of profiting from homelessness and the housing crisis. The community resources company found out who they really are. Please help our community. Thank you.
Uh, Jerry?
Good morning. Jerry Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I live at 4935 Morella Avenue in Valley Village. And, um, I, um, support the appeal, I guess is the way to word it. And I want to take, uh, one little jab, if you will, at the planning department, why they care and why any other decision would come out of the fact that we decided to, uh, uh, try and establish some trees as historical or the property. Uh, what does that do with any of the decision? And this is where we get all kinds of stuff in this project that shouldn't be. It's a project, look at the project. That stuff is just extraneous and has nothing to do with anything. Um, one of the other things is other buildings. It's great, so now we're gonna have a block that's gonna be just all like a tunnel because there's other buildings there, so we're gonna put another one, and that's acceptable. That's acceptable. Uh, I don't agree with that. There should be some open space, there should be some. We should be able to, uh, and especially cutting off a street, if you'd say so. You know, of all the things in the world, cutting off a. Of all the things in the world, cutting off a street. One of the other things I would like to ask, and also one of the other things you said, was public opinion and our public policy and the Valley Village plan and what have you. We don't have the rules aren't spelled out, 1, 2, 3, 4, and very, very specific. It's a general feeling. And even if you look at all the laws and everything else that you're supporting or using, 90% of them are variances. Everything is being built. It's got a variance. So it's really not going according to the law anyway, the rules. So I think that you should take a look at it. If you're going to use Valley Village's plan, look at it. We're trying to make it into a Valley Village. It's a village. That's what we want. We want to have... We're not against progress. We're not against construction. There won't be a problem with that. We have houses being built all around us and what have you, as long as they stay in the neighborhood itself and look like they belong there. That's really what we want. We're not looking to stop all construction. We're not looking to stop all that. I would like to ask any of you. Do any of you live in Valley Village? Have you ever driven down any of these places where the properties are being done? And I'll bet none of you have. Have you been over that site?
Sir, I moved into that neighborhood in 1962. I grew up there. My parents...
You're the only one, I'll bet.
I know that neighborhood.
I'll bet you're the only one. People are making judgment on properties that they don't...
We know the valley.
You know the valley, but you don't know that. I bet you've never been to the location. Most people, you know, you're making a decision on a location that you've never seen. You know, you've got a picture. Somebody makes a photograph, and you can touch it up or do whatever you want. So I think that... I think that there should be some value placed on an environment. And if it means a little open space, why not? Why not have it? I think it makes a village nice. And these kinds of buildings, one after the other... I won't go over the parking because we know what that's like, anyway. Drive down Laurel Canyon, drive down Riverside Drive, drive down Magnolia. You can't do it anymore because every one of these corners and every one of these blocks have nothing but high-rise buildings or apartment complexes. And there's no affordable housing anywhere, except for the ones that get the perks, and then there's no oversight, so they just don't end up that way, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Deborah Rovantini.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes. I agree with everyone, and I'm here today. And my question is, yeah, why? Why are you putting this here in this area? What is the point?
Ms. Rovantini, I'm required to give us your address.
Yes, 4910 Tahunga Avenue.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, around me, they have demolished everything. I mean, there is no affordable housing. The buildings that they are building and the apartment buildings that they are building now are singles for $2,300, one-bedrooms for $2,500, and $3,000 over at the Hezbi, over at the Studio 77. Those are in North Hollywood. But in my neighborhood, they have demolished in the last month six properties, just wiped out the rent-controlled buildings. All the rent control on Kawanga, three properties. Two more properties are going on Camarillo. And if anybody's driven down Moore Park, we have like seven new buildings on Moore Park going up. So, and all these apartments are way over. They are not affordable. So the other reason is, if you're taking out rent control, where are you putting these people? Where are they going? And why are you taking them away from what they need? The bus lines going down Chandler, the metro? Is it only that the people that are going to have their little BMWs parked in an $800,000 unit? I don't know if you remember what they're charging for those 26 units that are going in a postage stamp place and cutting off the community? If anybody has driven down Laurel Canyon after 3:00 P.M. in the last year, you can't get down at after 3:00 P.M. in the afternoon down going north. So the traffic, the impact, the taking... Like Jennifer said, taking down the trees. Why are you taking down the trees? Why are you getting rid of them? What's the point? We need all that. And aesthetically, it's wiping out everything that you love and why you moved to the area. Why I moved here, why I moved into the area, the NoHo Arts District, the Valley Village, which I shop in, I don't understand it. I just don't. I don't understand anymore. It's heartbreaking. I'm serious. It's heartbreaking that you're allowing this and you're moving people out and you're taking them out of their homes. 10 here today, 20 tomorrow, you know, 30 the next day. You're displacing everybody and breaking communities. You're breaking them. And it's got to stop somewhere. And I'm really serious. It makes me sick. So I'm just appealing to your better self, that you can sleep at night, that you're not throwing somebody out of their house that they love, that they've been in maybe 10, 15 years. It's really destructive. And half the places don't even get hearings like this. Half of them are just... I just drove down the other day, and two places were gone. Just destroyed, gone. So, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mike McCracken. Thomas Rowland.
How you guys doing?
Hello.
I live at 12301 Weddington Avenue. My name's Thomas Rowland. It's on the same property as 5303 Hermitage Ave. So this is one of the properties that they want to take down. And I guess a point that hasn't been brought up because there's been a ton of points that have been brought up, and they're all extremely accurate. But one point that hasn't been brought up, I'm 23 years old. I'm one of the few people out here that lives on their own at 23 because everyone's trying to pay back college debt. So is this project ultimately trying to wipe away so college kids after school can't be in this area? Is this so that, you know, my generation is paying a stupid amount of money for, you know, everything after school? Is this so that they can't move into the area? Is this supposed to be like almost a retirement place? Is this supposed to be something that only people who have money or come from money can afford? I guess that's a big question I have for anyone who doesn't want to appeal the project. Is this going to be something that's literally just meant not to keep middle class? Because from what... I don't know the financial background of what they're actually going to be charging for these apartments. But alls I know is that they're wiping out all the rent-controlled apartments to build these apartments. So are they trying to kind of kill the middle class out of this? Are they trying to make this an only upper-class neighborhood? And another point I wanted to speak on is like, right now, the traffic's pretty bad, right, on the crossroad of Weddington? Or Hermitage, for that matter. So traffic's already bad as it is. I mean, having kids out by the street, who knows? You know, it's a crazy road as it is. So kids playing out by the street should be very concerned about getting hit by cars and things like that. Imagine if you take these nine buildings and build 26 of them and fill them with that many more people, how much more hefty the actual traffic will be? Like, even if I wanted to have... I'm 23. I'll probably have kids in a couple of years. If I was to have kids, you know, by 26, do I want to raise kids in a neighborhood where they can't go out and ride a bike? You know what I'm saying? Like, that's a huge piece of this. And right now, I'm actually... You've heard people referring to people parking illegally. That's me pretty much every day. So just so you know, if you see the ticket, that's me. That's me trying to get a good parking spot. But, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know that this necessarily even does anything, to be completely honest. And I don't know if that's proper protocol to say. But I just wanted to give you my take on things as a 23-year-old living out here from the East Coast. You know what I'm saying? So thank you, guys, for taking the time.
I have a quick question for you.
Go ahead.
So you live in one of the nine apartment buildings?
That's right.
So how many parking spaces do you get for your unit?
Right now, well, right now, on that dead-end street, like on the end of, it's Hermitage or Weddington, at the end of Weddington, there's probably about like...
No, the apartment.
No, for your unit.
Oh, my unit? There's a driveway, so usually about three cars can fit in there.
So each of the units in the apartment that you live in
Yeah.
doesn't have parking spaces allocated?
No, well, there's a driveway, and about three cars fit in there. But no, it's nothing that's specifically allocated to us. As a community...
So there's three parking spaces for nine units?
No, no, no. I don't live in nine units.
Nine buildings.
Nine buildings.
You live... You live in a single-story triplex?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I live, yes, that's correct. I'm not one of the apartment buildings. I'm one of the standalone houses. And we have a driveway, so that's where parking is, where I let my fiance park. So that's what that is, you know?
Oh, I see.
So I park illegally or I walk a couple of blocks. But it's not so bad because I'm young and I can run still, you know? So I feel a little safer than some because I can run pretty fast. But you guys know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Regine Rose. Joanne Erickson.
Good evening. My name's Joanne Erickson. I live at 12234 Chandler Boulevard in Valley Village. And I have lived in this apartment building for 22 years. And there have been people who have lived there for 58 years, which is my neighbor by the street. We have seen the, you know, all the destruction of the private homes. In fact, on Bellingham, which is the next street east of Laurel Canyon and then it's at Bellham, but there's one house left on the whole area from Laurel Canyon and Chandler all the way down to Magnolia. One house. And the rest is just newly constructed apartment buildings, or all old established ones as well. Okay, you are under the misconception that there is any kind of... or capable. There is not. People in my building, which there are two buildings, and each one has 12 units, and our tenants have driven around for hours and hours and hours trying to find a parking space because we have 24 units and only 10 parking spaces. Now, there's also the problem of the speeding. People use Bellingham particularly off of Magnolia to avoid... Because Chandler is in the south of One Way Street, you know, two-way, east and west. And there are so many children in this area. And most of the blocks that I live do not go all the way through. So people need to walk in the streets. They're pushing babies and carriages and whatever. And then you've got some idiots driving about 90 miles an hour down there just to avoid and make a turn and go five blocks out of their way. As far as that, the apartments that they are building are not affordable for the people who are living there now. Anyway, there's one that was just finished just a couple of months ago on Hermitage. And it took about $3,000. So I don't see that maybe everybody said. People have to move. They can't afford to live there anymore. Okay, I'm really concerned about the street that you're taking out. I know it's a short little thing, but is the public going to be in remorse for all the taxes they have paid for the maintenance of this street? And as far as the trees, in your aisle of the planning thing, it does say that you are going to move those trees. It's almost 100 billion of them, for God's sake. Construction alone is probably going to kill them. And anyway, are you aware that Valley Village does not have sewers? They have catchphases, which is going to be really impacted. The ones that they have now are really, really ill-maintained, and they smell. I don't know what you people are watching you doing with all of the... I mean, the whole thing is just such a stupid concept. I cannot believe that intelligent people would approve this and would go along with it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Charles Fisher?
That's too easy.
Yes, sir, it is.
Good evening. Charlie Fisher, 140 South Avenue, 57 Highland Park, 9042. Here because I'm familiar with this particular street. I don't live in the neighborhood, but I do know people in the neighborhood. And I also happen to have written the nomination on the Doherty House across the street that was torn down three days before it was supposed to go before the Cultural Heritage Commission. This is a neighborhood that's under siege. And it's very unfortunate because it's a neighborhood that has a certain ambiance to it. And it's rapidly going to lose that ambiance.